Beating come to order, please. Planning Commission members, we've got a little of in excess of forty folks that would like to say their piece. As all of you know, I'm sure our bylaws require thirty minutes, three-minute speech. I would like to suggest that we alter that so that everybody can have an opportunity to say something. Go to an hour, and if I did the math right, that's a minute and a half speech, which I will have to live with if we go that way. But we're going to need a motion to do that because to alter, we have to have a motion to alter our, to set aside our bylaws tonight to accomplish that. If there is any interest in that, a motion be entertained by the chair. Did I get a second? I don't think this is on our thing. We're going to have to do a voice vote. All in favor say aye. Pose no, motion carries. Those of you in the audience, you will be limited to a minute and a half because there's forty of you, and we're going to go an hour instead of our thirty minutes, okay? Approval of the minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand?
Oh, good night roll call.
Roll call, bam, my bad. We need to be here. All in favor, all in attendance, press your yes button, please. Record it. Thank you. Minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty, any changes or corrections? Motion made in second, prepare to vote. Vote now. Brian, you're not locking in, buddy. Record it. Motion carries, thank you. Consent agenda, staff?
Chairman, we've got a couple of announcements.
Announcements, I'm sorry. I'm off to a row here. Announcements.
Provided I can find them. We just wanted to point out that we were, there's several revised reports, so in front of you, that would be a revised report for item ten and for items twenty-five and twenty-six. And in the cases of items twenty-five and twenty-six, actually, all of these are on the consent agenda, and the changes are reflected within the consent agenda.
Anything else?
That'll be all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now we'll go to the consent agenda staff.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item three, Arrington Retreat, Section Five, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of one year. Item four, Clovercroft Reserve, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, three-hundred-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of one year. Item five, Falls Grove, Section Four, Performance Bond for Waste Water Collection System, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of six months. Item six, Falls Grove, Section Four, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars. Recommendation convert, convert to maintenance in amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars and extend for a period of one year. Item seven, Hillsborough Cove, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Recommendation reduce it to an amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and extend for one year. Item eight, Kings Chapel, Section Three C, Performance Bond for Waste Water Collection System, twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Recommendation convert to maintenance in amount of three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a period of two years. Item nine, McDaniel Farms, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred dollars. Recommendation release the bond. Item ten, McDaniel Farms, Section One, Performance Bond for Waste Water Collection System, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of six months. Item eleven, Southern Preserve, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, thirty-five-hundred dollars. Recommendation release the bond. Item twelve, Southern Preserve, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, thirteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Recommendation release the bond. Item thirteen, Stevens Valley, Section Three, Performance Bond for Water and Sewer, twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars and sixty-seven cents. Recommendation release the bond. Item fourteen, Swanson Ridge, Performance Bond for Landscaping, sixty-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of six months. Item fifteen, The Grove, Section Nine, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of one year. Item sixteen, Weatherford Estates, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, two-hundred-thousand dollars. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of one year with a review in three months. Staff further requests that a scheduled to repair deficient drainage items be submitted within the three-month time frame. Dropping down to final plats, item twenty-five, final plat review for Falls Grove, Section Six, containing sixty-six lots and eighty-two-point-two-eight acres in the fifth voting district. This plat is in order, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One, posting a performance bond for roads, drainage and road control in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. This amount is based on work completed. Item two, posting a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District in the amount of fifty-seven-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Item three, posting a performance bond in amount of waste water collection system in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Item four, execution of performance agreements for all the above referenced sureties. Item five, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat. And item twenty-six, final plat review for Falls Grove, Section Seven, containing twenty-four lots and seventeen-point-eight-five acres in the fifth voting district. This plat is in order, and staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One, the posting of performance bond for roads, drainage and erosion control in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. This amount is based on work completed. Item two, posting a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District in the amount of twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Item three, posting a performance bond, the wastewater collection system in the amount of sixty-five-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Item four, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Item five, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thanks, sir. Questions on consent? Motion made in second, is any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries, thank you. Next here is the Agenda Sixteen, Agenda Item Seventeen under Old Business, Non-Residential Site Plan Review for the Brightstone Campus on one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-point-two acres located off Columbia Pike in the eleventh voting district, staff?
I'll catch up, Mr. Chairman, I beg you, please. The applicant is requesting approval of the overall master plan for the Brightstone Campus, which consists of approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred square feet of buildings and the associated parking. The applicant has requested that, requested action on this item be deferred until the April twenty-twenty meeting. Staff concurs with that request.
Motion to defer. Motion made in seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries, thank you. The next is our public hearing. For those of you in the audience, our procedures are as follows. The staff will make a presentation of this agenda item, and at its conclusion, we will open for a public hearing, and at that time, I will call your name. Remember, you have a minute and a half. You see me go like this, it's time to sit down, okay? Is that fair? Can you see me? Thank you. All right. Mike, you ready?
Yes, sir, I'm getting ready. It'll take me just a minute to get the PowerPoint loaded on the screen here. While I'm doing this, I'll just mention to you that, as you are well aware, there have been a lot of correspondence, there has been a lot of correspondence that has been sent to you all in recent days and recent weeks, and we have made a copy, we printed out the ones that have been addressed to the Planning Commission. There are two binders up here in case you want to look through those, but I just wanted to call your attention to that. Okay, good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. So, as you know, we have been working on this project for the better part of sixteen months or so, and this is a really big deal for the county. It's a big deal because this plan is going to very directly influence what it's like to live in Williamson County in the future, what things look like in the county in the future, and will directly influence the type of quality of life that our citizens will enjoy. As you know, staff is recommending approval of the resolution to adopt the plan this evening, and I'll mention that Monday evening, the county commission voted twenty-two to one to recommend that you approve that. They endorsed, endorsed the plan and sent their recommendation. Let me also just mention at the start that we have been working with an excellent consulting team on this project, led by Greg Dale, who is with us this evening. Greg is with McBride, Dale Clarion, they've worked with us on a number of projects, and so they've got a great familiarity with the county. We also have had a couple of subconsultants work on the project, and those folks have specific areas of expertise in the fields of transportation planning and also fiscal So I'm going to kind of lead things off, I will try to set the stage for Greg by covering some background information for you, by highlighting the process that we have gone through in this plan, and by outlining some of the key evaluation and, and, some of the key evaluation and analysis that has been done during this process. And then Greg will come up and he'll give his portion of the presentation highlighting the key components of the plan. So, I mentioned quality of life at the beginning, and there are a lot of aspects that go into quality of life, but one of those important aspects, I believe, is community character, which can be thought of as the quality of the physical environment. And we in Williamson County are very fortunate to have really exceptional community character. I think it's one of the things that helps define the county, I think it's one of the things, maybe intangible, but one of the things that helps, helps to draw people and businesses to our county. So I think we should be very proud of the kind of character that we have, and that we should work very hard to protect that character and enhance it. Which brings us to the comprehensive plan. As you are aware, the current version of the comprehensive plan was adopted back in two thousand and seven, following a very extensive public input process. The plan addresses a whole host of things, but primarily, this is a land use plan covering growth and development issues. So we had a lot of public comment during that process. There's a lot of information in the plan, but if you were to boil the plan down into one key theme, it would certainly be to preserve rural character and to focus the growth strategically, you know, in and around the cities, namely, in the urban growth boundaries. So that was the, the theme that emerged during the public process, and, and you'll, you know that in the plan, that language is very strongly expressed in the plan. At one point in the process, in order to implement that policy, there was a recommendation to change the allowable residential densities in portions of the rural areas that were zoned one unit per acre to one unit per five acres, okay? That was a, that was a specific recommendation in order to help implement that idea of preserving rural character. However, pretty late in that process, after that recommendation to alter the densities was already in some of the preliminary drafts of the plan, there were a number of large landowners who expressed concerns about that proposal and expressed concerns about what they felt like that would do to property values. So, as a result of that, at that time, back in two thousand and seven, there was a decision made not to recommend altering those basic residential densities that had been in place for a number of years. And so, as a result of that, there's, there's been this disconnect between the language in the plan and the policies of the plan that speak about rural character and that recommendation not to change the densities. And so, that has proven difficult, that's kind of hampered the county's efforts to implement that central theme expressed in the plan of preserving rural character. This slide kind of shows what has happened since two thousand and seven, when the plan was adopted, and just to give some orientation to you, the dark gray areas represent the cities, the yellow areas surrounding the cities are the urban growth boundaries, the areas with the white background are considered the rural areas. The red represents development that was already in place when the plan was adopted in two thousand and seven, and then the blue and purple shades represent development that has taken place following the adoption of the plan. And so, if the, if the policies of the plan were, were being carried out, you would see a lot more of that blue and purple located in the yellow areas, in the urban growth boundaries. But what has happened, to a very large degree, is instead of that, development has been kind of leapfrogging those urban growth boundaries and settling into the rural areas, and you all are very aware of that being Planning Commission members. And so, that has resulted in sort of this gradual chipping away of rural character that, that citizens value, that the county values. It's also resulted in an exacerbation of a growing traffic problem, and, and that's something that you all hear on a, on a very regular basis, as, as development proposals are brought before you. You'll remember, a couple of years ago, the county did what we refer to as a comprehensive traffic strategy report, where we tried to get a handle on, on this growing issue. And, and in that report, it was demonstrated that while currently, a lot of the traffic on county roads is pass-through traffic from other places, if the growth trends that we've been seeing continue, then county residents are going to become increasingly dominant users of county roads. It also highlighted a tremendous need for roadway improvements and, and really also highlighted the disparity between the cost that would be necessary to fund those improvements and the funds that are really available and, and that there is a mechanism to, to do that with. And so that's, that's a concerning trend, this land use pattern, for a variety of reasons, fiscally and, and other reasons. And it's particularly concerning in light of the pretty staggering growth projections that are out there that suggest that the population in Williamson County will more than double by the year twenty forty and exceed five-hundred thousand. It's important to note that these, these projections are not our projections, these numbers weren't arrived at by the consultant team, these are, these are projections that were put out by the Nashville Area MPO a number of years ago, several years ago, and there have been some more recent projections put out by the Greater Nashville Regional Council that are very, very similar to these numbers. So whether, whether these numbers are higher than what we'll actually receive, maybe, I think a lot of people think they may be a little bit high. But the point is that, that under any scenario, under any projection, the growth is forecasted not only to continue but to accelerate, and, and so that really kind of punctuates, I think, the need for us to be very deliberate, very intentional in, in our planning. We've used the analogy throughout this process of a fork in the road, and, and it's not just a cute saying, I mean, we really do feel like that that is appropriate, we really do feel like that we're in that fork in the road moment in Williamson County where we need to decide once and for all, you know, whether the county still does want to preserve rural character in outlying areas by focusing the majority of growth in and around the municipalities, and that's what the current plan has recommended for a number of years. That's been the policy, it just hasn't been implemented very well. Or, does the county want to conclude that the continuation of suburban development sprawling into rural areas is acceptable and that the previous policies are no longer appropriate? So that was kind of the fundamental question that we set out to answer during this process. Okay, so let me shift gears and talk about the comp plan update specifically. It's been a very good process. We have worked with a terrific advisory committee that's, that's been comprised of elected officials, appointed officials, and then various stakeholders, you know, so we had representation from the Home Builders Association, from, there was their development community, the environmental community, and then there were just, just citizens who were involved in this. So we feel like it was a very good, very balanced steering committee. We also had a very robust public participation program associated with this plan, and then, as you know, we, we provided regular updates and meetings with you all and with the county commission. So two, two things about the planning process that I want to highlight here, one is public involvement, the other is the, the scenario planning that's done, and I'll talk more about that in, in a minute or two. But in terms of the public involvement, you know, we, we set out to, to have a very significant public input process here, and we did that in a variety of ways, you know, we held public meetings, but we wanted to supplement that this time with a lot of online engagement, and we feel like we were able to reach a lot of people in that fashion. And then to get the word out about the planning process, about meetings and about public input opportunities in general, we, we use a variety of tools. We started that by sending actually direct emails to all of the people that, in our database from the, the plan done in two thousand and seven, as well as the four special area plans that we had done, and then that database grew as the, as the project continued and more people became involved, in fact, it grew tremendously. We used really all the, all the media opportunities, television, radio, and newspaper, there were, there were a couple of interviews on the, on the evening news, two different Nashville stations, I think there were ten or so articles throughout the process, and then at least a couple of radio shows. So we, we used a variety of means to get the word out, and, and because of that, we were able to reach a lot more people during this process than we were back in two thousand and seven, or really in any other process that we've had. Okay, so specifically, early in the process, we wanted to gauge the community's feedback about, you know, what they're seeing, what they'd like to see in the future, and so this slide summarizes some of that initial public comment that was given, both at a, a public meeting as well as online via a couple of surveys, and, you know, frankly, what we heard during this process was very similar to what we heard back in two thousand and seven, you know, with a strong emphasis on the need to preserve rural character, to focus growth strategically, a lot of concern about the traffic in the unincorporated county, a loss of open space, and then people wanted to continue to see, you know, quality development take place. So the comments were very similar, I think this time, they were voiced, you know, even more strongly than they were back in two thousand and seven. Another key point in the process was, we asked the consultant team to develop a couple of different growth scenarios for the county to, to consider. One of those growth scenarios, you've heard these terms, you know, I'm sure, the past month especially, but actually, you know, since last fall, business as usual and town and country. Business as usual, of course, is just what it sounds like, you know, that's, that's what if the county built out under current development policies and under the current zoning, what would that look like? Versus the town and country model, what if the county altered residential densities in the rural areas to one unit per five acres and encouraged additional growth within the urban growth boundaries at densities that were part of the city's plans already or prevailing densities in those jurisdictions? What would that scenario look like? And then we asked the consultant team to do an analysis and an evaluation of each of those scenarios based on three key criteria that we feel like are important to the county. The first of those being community character, in other words, how closely do those two scenarios align with what the public has said they want to see happen in the county? The second one is the impact of those two scenarios on roadway improvement needs and, and traffic and, and transportation, and then finally, overall fiscal impacts associated with each scenarios in terms of the county delivering services in the future. So this slide is an illustration of that first scenario, the town and country, again, you know, this one was what if the county continued and developed out under existing policies, what would that look like? And you see the numbers on the right-hand side of the, the screen that suggest that under the current policies, that could result in approximately eighty-two-thousand total homes in unincorporated areas outside of urban growth boundaries. The average lot size in unincorporated county outside of urban growth boundaries would be just about two acres, and that's, that's, that's significant because that includes the larger parcels that, that wouldn't develop because of floodplain or, or other issues. It would result in about a five-billion-dollar cumulative impact fiscally, in terms of the cost to the county to provide services over a twenty-year period. It would result in about six automobile trips per day per acre, and then it would, it would necessitate at least three-hundred-and-thirty-million dollars in roadway improvements, and, and this is probably a conservative figure. And then if you contrast that with the town and country model, again, what would it look like if the county were to alter residential densities in the rest of the unincorporated county that wasn't already zoned that way? So, except for urban growth boundaries and except for the areas that are within designated hamlets or village areas, what would that look like? And so you, you see the numbers here, a reduction, you know, about half of the total dwelling units in the unincorporated county, a more than doubling of the average lot size to nearly five acres, a three-and-a-half-billion-dollar reduction fiscally in terms of the cost to serve, and that's very significant in a, in a county like Williamson County that prides itself on being fiscally responsible, keeping taxes low. Automobile trips would be shaved nearly in half, and then roughly one-hundred-and-ten-million dollars would be shaved off, just the roadway improvement needs on county roads alone. So this is just a side-by-side comparison, I won't belabor this one, but you can see it before I, before I move on. So once the scenarios were developed and analyzed, we wanted to present those to the community, to elected officials, appointed officials, the advisory committee, and so we held another public meeting at that point. We also replicated that public meeting in terms of the activities and the questions online, and, and got a lot of input from the public on those scenarios. And so of the folks that, that participated either in the meetings or online, ninety-two percent of them favored the town and country approach. We met with the Citizens Advisory Committee regarding these different scenarios, and the general consensus by the advisory committee was also to, or the consensus was also to pursue the town and country approach. In fairness, I think a couple of the, the builders wanted to see the details, but they, but they were on board certainly with the concept. And then there was a joint meeting that many of you attended back in October with the county commission and the planning commission, and the consensus at that point was also to pursue the town and country approach. So this is, I won't even go through all these, this is kind of a summary of what we learned, you know, growth is accelerating, of course, the current path is, is eroding character, it's, it's resulting in increased traffic and, and really isn't fiscally sustainable to the county, and the public is, is wanting a change, they're wanting those, those issues to be addressed. And so we feel like that through this process, we have answered that fork in the road. And so we feel like that through this process, we have answered that fork in the road question that we started out with, and we feel like that was answered with a resounding yes that the county does still want to preserve rural character in outlying areas by focusing the majority of growth in and around the municipalities. So that's my portion, and Greg will come up now and continue the presentation, then he and I will both be available for questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. What I would like to do is to walk you through some highlights of the plan focusing on two different categories. One is the land use plan itself, and you see the map here that shows that. But then what I'd really like to focus on are the implementation strategies in the plan. And the reason for that is when you look at this map and you compare it to the map that's in the 2000 plan, it doesn't look all that different. In other words, the ideas embodied in that plan in terms of preserving rural low densities and directing growth into and around the existing cities and urban growth boundaries is still the same. What the difference here is in terms of how it's implemented. So let me walk you through, there's four key building blocks to this land use plan. There's the rural, there's the hamlet, the village, and the municipal growth areas or the urban growth area boundaries. And with each of those categories are a series of policies that are set out in the plan, and I'd like to just walk you through those one at a time. And I'm going to start with the rural and work my way up. So the land use policies, and this is just a summary of those, you'll see the language about the continuation of the rural pattern and low-density residential. And one of the key ideas in the plan is that there is this intent to create a land use pattern or preserve a land use pattern where the residential and the agricultural and rural character can peacefully coexist from a land use perspective, that there are some other policies in here that I'll talk about under implementation that are designed to preserve that rural character. The plan does recommend that the base density of one unit per five acres occur in all of the rural areas. I think you are aware that if this plan is adopted, none of that zoning actually changes. That would be a separate step that would be considered in the future. The expectation of rural levels of service, so for example, the policy would be that there would not be the extension of sanitary sewer into those rural areas. Protected natural and historic resources, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that under the implementation. That's a very important concept. Improved conservation subdivision, another thing that I'll hit in terms of the implementation as well as open space preservation, active affirmative open space preservation. Then kind of working our way up, the hamlets, you're familiar with the hamlets. They're essentially the small community crossroads. The plan recognizes them as being important. They are potential rural focal points, but they're not recommended to receive a lot of development. They might be appropriate for some small-scale community services, restaurant, certainly civic, you know, there are churches and potentially post office there, those sorts of things. But they are identified. Then the villages are those areas where there is the opportunity within a rural context to accommodate some more substantial development outside of the urban growth boundaries or outside of the cities, but only by virtue of having the special area plans and custom zoning that goes along with those area plans in place. So for example, you're aware that since that last plan was adopted, the counties followed through with College Grove, Grassland, Leapers Fork, and Triune in terms of the special area plans. In this plan, there are two other areas that are currently designated as hamlets that are recommended for consideration to be future villages, including Arrington and Rutterville. You'll see those as a star on the map. But again, the plan is clear that that would only occur when and if special area plans are prepared for those areas and special zoning implemented. So those are opportunities for some additional growth. Certainly Triune in particular is an area that has already been subject to the special area plan and has substantial development potential that could occur in those areas. And then we get to what are known as the municipal growth areas. You're aware that those are the areas that are identified under Tennessee Public Chapter 1101. And you'll hear me talk with the implementation about the need for collaborative regional growth. The bottom line with all those words is that what this plan is recommending is a much more aggressive effort to make those municipal growth areas work the way they were intended to work. That didn't occur. That hasn't occurred within the past 10 years or so, and we think that's a very important part of this plan. And of course, were that to occur, the intent is ultimately that growth is encouraged to occur under municipal control, meaning those would ultimately be best served by the municipalities that they surround. So let me talk about the growth management strategy, because this is key. So there's four things I want to talk about. What we've been calling the growth management framework, which in turn has two pieces, one having to do with the rural density, one having to do with municipal growth areas. But I'm also going to talk about additional rural protections that are proposed in the plan. Circle back to the transportation infrastructure. That's been discussed for a while, and I'll refresh your memory on that. And then finally, the quality growth and development. So in terms of the growth management framework, there are two complementary but not connected strategies here. One is the reduction of the rural densities from one unit per acre to one unit per five acres outside the municipal growth areas, other than those areas where there are special plans with customized zoning. So that is a significant recommendation of this plan. That's something that the county, through a subsequent zoning process, that's something that the county can accomplish on its own, as contrasted with the importance of the municipal growth area planning. And what's being proposed here, and I can answer questions about all the language you see on here, but what's being proposed here is that the county convene what we're calling a regional or county-wide planning process with all of the units of local government, all of the cities, and essentially revisit the whole urban growth boundary concept to get everybody at the table, and that would be to adjust everything from the boundaries of those, and there may need to be areas that are added or areas that are removed from urban growth boundaries, agreed upon density, essentially more focused planning in those areas, and ultimately have it wrapped up into a, one or a series of intergovernmental agreements or memorandum of understanding where the cities and the county all agree on how they're going to be served, what the land use is going to be, what the density is going to be, and everybody buys into that. Essentially, to take what was done however many 15, 20 years ago when the 1101 process first came in, update that and try to make sure that the tools, the agreements are put in place to make it work in a more systematic way. So those are that cluster of growth management. The additional rural protection, so our belief is there are other tools that the county should be exploring in addition to zoning, and those are things like an open space preservation plan. That's actually called for in the 2007 plan. It says very clearly that the county should adopt an open space preservation plan that does the things you see here, identifies and priorities land suitable for presentation, explores a dedicated funding source, identifies other kinds of things like conservation easements, purchase of development rights, maybe transfer of development rights, that essentially permanently preserves open space in addition to the reduced density that's created by the change in the zoning. We also heard a lot about the importance of historic and cultural landscape preservation. So Old Hillsborough Road, for example, was talked about a lot, that it's not just about open space, it's not just about density, it's about respecting and finding ways to preserve and protect historic and cultural resources that are in the area. So there are a series of things that are recommended in the plan to accomplish that. We also think it's important to think in terms of pure agricultural protection. This is, that there are tools that the county can be looking at to make it easier for families who own farms to have those farms stay in the family. So for example, the ability of a landowner to carve off parcels for next generations of family and to avoid certain things, and maybe it's avoiding fees, maybe it is exemptions from the density, the underlying density to allow that to occur. Those family subdivision exemptions, which we've seen in other parts of the country, and then a whole series of other potential things that are important to look at. So again, we're not just thinking about low density, we're not just thinking about open space preservation and cultural resources. We're also thinking about providing tools to allow working farms to remain in families. Update the conservation subdivision regulations. You know, one of the things that I think became clear in the past 10 years is that when you start with a base density of one unit per acre, conservation subdivisions are difficult to make them work when you start with that base density. But when you start with a base density of one unit per five acres, there's a lot of opportunities to improve those. So the conservation subdivision regulation should be revisited to reflect that change in density. Then we have the transportation infrastructure. I think this board commission will recall, a couple of years ago, we went through a process, we helped you go through a process that resulted in the comprehensive traffic strategy or traffic study. All of the things that you see here were in that report. And if you remember what happened is that report was accepted and it included roadway funding tool consideration and evaluation. That report was accepted but was essentially put aside pending the outcome of this process. So now it's time to go back to updating your major thoroughfare plan, figuring out how you're going to fund county roadway improvements. As Mike was saying, if you do nothing else other than look at your existing deficiencies, the cost of your existing deficiencies over $100 million far outpaces the funding tools that you have in place right now. So in terms of funding those county road improvements, there are substantial improvements that would have to be made just to catch up, let alone continue with future growth. So anyway, those are the things that you see there. One of those, it's an interesting byproduct of this process, is that if you change the zoning to a base density of one unit per five acres, you really don't need the traffic shed regulations anymore because that is the default density for those. And that's a tool, I say that because that's a tool that in some ways has been very innovative and very cutting-edge in terms of the kind of tool that it is, but it's also very complicated. And I think you all know this better than anyone. That would be a byproduct of the density issue. And then overall quality, growth, and development. There has been this common thread since I've been involved with the county of continuing to want to ramp up the quality of development that you're getting, and you've done a variety of things in the past 10 years to do that. We're just suggesting that that continue, that you're constantly monitoring how you're doing things, how you're engaging in the development review process and the regulations, and continue to do that. And then in particular, I think the village area plan process has been very successful in terms of building local consensus within those villages. And I think, having gone through four of those now, I think that you all have gotten that down to something that has been very successful. And then finally, if you look at the last couple pages in the plan, you will see this chart. All this is doing is taking those implementation recommendations and trying to put them on a timeframe. There's a lot here. There's a lot to accomplish here. You'll see, for example, the first and shortest would be the change in the zoning. That is something that the county can do, certainly through a process with public hearings, but that's something that is immediately within the county's control, as contrasted with the second bar there, which is the growth management strategy, which is clearly a heavier lift. We're talking about working with the county in six different cities to try to get around the table together and figure out these growth boundaries and figure out how to make them work more successfully. We think that's doable. We've worked in a number of regions where that's been accomplished, but it's clearly not going to be a one-step kind of thing. And then you can see the rest of the tasks there. We tried to lay them out in a logical way. We tried to identify a five-year implementation strategy here to get those accomplished. So that concludes my presentation on the highlights of the plan. Mike and I are happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, staff? Mr. Stale? Anyone? Apparently you did a heck of a job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We will open the public hearing at this time. I will remind you to have a minute and a half, and I would ask that you give me your name and address and try to adjust that mic to suit your height when you come to the podium. First to speak, Laura Turner.
Laura Turner, 1108 Dickinson Lane, Franklin. Good evening, chairman and commissioners. Monday evening, the Williamson County Commission made history with their 22 to 1 vote to endorse the Town and Country Land Use Choice for our county's comprehensive land plan. You are now being asked to adopt this land use planning choice. Williamson County's highly successful economic development engine is fueled by a town and country lifestyle. Our county land use plan needs a tune-up to town and country choice. It is fiscally prudent and will keep our county's economic development engine running smoothly for future generations to enjoy. The overwhelming majority of citizen taxpayers support this choice, as seen by the sea of signs out in the audience. For over a year, the county planning staff has been working on the Williamson 2040 Plan. The Johnny-come-lately protest of some realtors, home builders, and landowners are disingenuous and specious. Maybe they thought the town and country choice wouldn't get traction, or maybe their postponement tactic has been in their playbook all along. Those protesting about property rights should understand their rights end where taxpayers' pockets begin. Growth simply does not pay for itself. Taxpayers are finally realizing that they do not want their pockets picked to subsidize never-ending school building and other infrastructure to satiate their avarice. In 2001, Scenic America, a national group solely dedicated to preserving and enhancing the scenic character of America's communities, made, we made the top 10 most endangered scenic place in America back in 2001. Your vote tonight has been a long time coming. The population forecasts are staggering. We simply cannot continue business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a share.
There you go.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Ginger Shurling, 2227 Osborne Road, Arrington, Tennessee. And I thank you, Chairman Lackey, and the county, the planning commissioners. I was involved with the initial 2007 comprehensive plan meetings. This new update has encouraged even more citizen input. In fact, the entire two-year process was driven by the demands and the responses of the public. The citizens have been almost unanimous in asking for a return to the five-acre zoning plus increased safeguards. Any individual who did not know about these public sessions was not focused on their community. This entire process has been very open to citizen input. I also need to let you know that I am representing 42 landowners, really 45 now, I've had three add this week, from the southeastern part of the county, mainly Arrington, Triune, and College Grove. These larger landowners hold over 3,000 acres. Some want to sell, some wish to hold their land. All of these landowners believe strongly that they can protect their property values by adhering to the five-acre zoning. I would like to remind you that good planning protects everyone, and if I have any time, I'd like to yield.
You don't have any, I'm sorry.
Oh, come on, John.
Somebody owes you 13 seconds. Penny, whoa, I can't. Kimley, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Penny Kimley, and I live on 2954 Span Town Road. And I was asked to read for Susan Fisher, who was a former Williamson County Planning Commissioner, speech tonight. She says, "My name is Susan Fisher. I reside at 6779 Comstock Road in Bethesda. My husband and I own 265 acres of land. First of all, I would like to thank the planning commissioners and the planning department." First of all, I would like to thank the planning commissioners and the planning department staff for their hard work and dedication. Secondly, I want to express my support for the Managed Growth Plan, also called the Town and Country Plan. As a longtime resident of the county and property owner, I feel an obligation to maintain the beauty and livability of our county, not just for our time, but for the generations to come. We are at a crossroads, and the decisions we make today will determine whether or not Williamson County retains a rural character and quality of life that has attracted so many to move here. The character cannot be maintained, maintained unless growth is managed. It is the physically responsible course as well, since the cost of providing schools and other services is not supportable as growth explodes out of control. For these reasons, I ask the commissioners to approve the Town and Country Plan tonight." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Wanda Barker? I think.
Yes. My name is Wanda Barker. I live in Rutherford County, but I am here working with two property owners who have a contract to sell their property. I just want to say that I've worked with Beth and Keith McCord over in the, I lived in Nolansville for 35 years. I love Williamson County. I shop and do everything in Williamson County that I can. I have family still here. I'd just like to say, you hear the bad things about development, but you don't hear the good things about development. Subdivision development opportunities for teenagers, business owners, community improvement, improvement to the community using the land that doesn't perk. The best and highest value for land, some of the flood zone area is used as green space in a subdivision. You hear all the bad thing about subdivisions, but not the good things. I'd also like to say, I looked at four subdivisions on Highway 96 from Arno Road all the way to Murfreesboro or to Triune. Ebbington Ridge, Hurstbourne, Kings Chapel and Black Hawk. I did their properties, number of properties times the tax revenue that they collect from each homeowner. I came up with one me, for the, for the subdivisions, I came up with $1,664,000 for one year. For the two properties I'm working with, they pay about $3,000 for a year. I did that by five years. I came up with, because they're in greenbelt, sorry, I didn't say that. Greenbelt, they pay about $15,000 after five years. The subdivisions paid $8,000, $8,321,000 after five years. I'd just like to say that the landowners aren't looking to get the, get any, any breaks. They love Williamson County as much as anyone else. They just want to know that they've got a say in what, what is going on. And, you know, I just asked for a pause.
Mark Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Stewart, reside at, on a second century farm, family farm, 6238 Patton Road, Arrington. I sent you an email weeks ago. With all my rationale, I, it may, may not have seen it, may be in the binder, but I'm not going to repeat it. All I'm going to say is that I feel that it's time to treat the eastern side of the county the way the rest of the county has been treated, the rural area, and it's time to move to 1 to 5. If you have to pause to do more study, I request you study 1 to 8 or 1 to 10. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Perry Osburn. I think he just yielded you 20 seconds.
Thank you, and thank the planning commissioner and staff for all the hard work they, they've done. My name is Perry Osburn. I live at 1070 Osborne Hollow Road, Osborne Hollow Farm, right off Osborne Road in Arrington, Tennessee. Our family's been there since 1805. Robert Osburn settled with his five kids and his wife there at that time, and he's served in the Revolutionary War and his name's on the courthouse here. So we, we got some pretty deep roots and we really support strongly the Town and Country option. We reject the premise that you're going to lose value in your land. I think it's all a matter of economics, supply and demand. There's a huge supply, a demand now for five-acre tracts. I had, I probably have two or three calls a year of somebody wanting to buy a part of my farm. You know, five acres, 10 acres, 20, mostly 20 acres. But anyway, so the demand is there now. The supply will just make the value of that property go dramatically higher. We have the infrastructure in place at this time to take what's here now. We don't have the infrastructure to do the one acre, the one acre tracts. It just won't work. It's going to be a mess, and I think the staff has proven that with their, with their figures and everything else. Please do the right thing for us. Kind of maintain our special lifestyle. It's, it's very unique. I've traveled all over the country and Middle Tennessee is one of the most unique places ever. So thank you for your time and.
Thank you, sir. Embry Blackwell.
I am Embry Blackwell. I am from District 2. I live at 9235 Horton Highway, College Grove, Tennessee. Been there 76 years, just never saw any need to leave. My mother's family came in here on Revolutionary War land grant at Ridge Crossroads. My dad's side of the family came in here in 1810. We've been here, we've been able to enjoy the farm. I want to pass it on to my daughter and then her to my granddaughter and then maybe generations further down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Davis.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Aaron Davis. I live at 7389 Hunting Camp Road. I was a broker, realtor for over a decade. I have real estate interest in development, but if the music business has taught me anything, that it's when someone says that if it's not about the money, it's always about the money. So this value thing that they're talking about, all these realtors that are here, they're here because the value of this property continues to rise. This is a charade and it's malarkey. So I, I believe that our responsibility as a group, all of our collective responsibility, especially theirs as developers and realtors, is to protect not just for us, but for those that come after us. And I'll leave you with a proverb. "That great societies are built by old men and women who plant trees for whom shade they will not sit." Please support the Town and Country approach and save this county.
Thank you, sir. Troy Masell. Troy? Am I reading that wrong?
No.
Troy Masell, last call. Pete Mosley.
Though you don't know me, I'm Pete Mosley, 9627 Clovercroft Road, Nolansville, Tennessee. John, you and I have spent 40, 45 years planting Williamson County's growth. We hear the mayor and Mr. Madison talk about that we want to keep things as usual, keep things the way they are. I think we've done a pretty damn good job for 45 years. When we've come on the planning commission, Williamson County was the fastest growing counties in the state. It is still the fastest growing county in the state. People are dying to get into Williamson County. Our good county mayor, he's out all over the world trying to bring companies in here to get more people to come in here, but he don't want people to develop that land. So where's he going to put them? Our hired planner has come up with a plan. Y'all, look at your mouth. There's an old saying, "The solution to pollution is dilution." Everybody knows a subdivision is pollution. Their plan starts up in Antioch and Laverne, comes through Nolansville, edge of Brentwood, through Franklin, through Thompson Station, through Spring Hill. We are going to develop the largest subdivision anywhere. It'll be three counties wide through six or seven communities or towns, and nobody can control what any one of these towns do or anything. This plan will have a very detrimental effect on my family. Mother and father bought 400 acres of land on Clovercroft Road in the 40s. They worked their whole life. Their only IRA they ever had was that farm. We never had a family vacation in my life, never had running water in my house in my life. This is only a thing to drive the prices of subdivision houses up. If you don't build any more subdivisions, price of these houses, houses is going to go even higher. Sorry about it, John, but you got seven generations in this thing here. It's hard to say it in minutes and a half.
Thank you, sir. Kathy, Kathy Weber.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Kathy Weber and I live at 1900 Springcroft Road, or Drive, I guess, in unincorporated county. And I, like others who support this plan, believe that the landowners have a right to use their property as they see fit, but this right has always and always been constrained by reasonable limits set by local government in the public interest, which in effect protects the rights of neighbors to enjoy their property. In this case, the Town and Country option represents such a reasonable and necessary limit. The residents of the county can enjoy the benefits of growth while limiting the negative impact of unmanaged growth, especially given the light tax burden and investment that county residents make in public infrastructure compared to other U.S. counties with the similar growth. There's, there is quality should be in place of quantity. And like the others with the Williamson County, Keep Williamson County Livable Group, we're here telling you that poor planning and management equals poor quality of life. So we would really, really respect the fact of your vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Janet Curtis.
Thank you, but since my points have already been made, my points have already been made.
Is that all the time you need?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
I'll give it to Kristen Curry if I can.
Ann, and I'm not sure what this is. I think it's a G. Anybody in the audience named Ann? That's you. You're going to have to work on your penmanship.
I'm left-handed. Yeah. It, it's Ann Gutzey. I'm 48, Carter's Creek Pike. I've lived out here for over 25 years. I'll be very quick. I want to read something out of AARP, actually. This is a little article. It's about living locally but eating locally. It's called a, a locavore. A locavore is a relatively new term, but an ancient way of eating. Locavores eat and eat the food produced, that's locally. It can be a pretty vague word, but before food was shipped, everyone was a locavore. Now the term has come to have a deeper meaning, meaning one that what we eat matters to our health and to the quality and the composition of what we eat, and it's determined by the food and how it's raised. So there's actually more value in where our food comes from, and it's worth more. So I thought I would just kind of bring what, speaking of the value of land or how land is devalued, but I brought what I think is gold, and this is just a jar of dirt, but this is gold. And I brought some asphalt, which I think is, could be the kiss of death, because this is life-giving and it regenerates and it gives back, and it's going to keep us going and the next generation and the next. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Donna Clements.
Hi, Donna Clements, I live at 504 Sandcastle Road. My husband had wanted to make it and he is unable to make it tonight, so I'm going to read his comments for him. His name is Brunsie. Although I've been licensed as a Realtor for over 20 years, I'm speaking tonight as a resident. There are lots of special interest groups, realtors, developers and builders, who are against the Town and Country proposal. Many of those special interest groups that benefit from the status quo come from outside our county, outside our state, even outside of our country. It is the residents of Williamson County to whom a duty is owed to protect our county's natural, cultural and historical resources. It is our taxes that are continuing to rise so that special interest groups can continue to profit. Williamson County is a county where people want to live and visit because of its unique resources and because of the historical, historically excellent stewardship of its leaders. I believe our property values will continue to rise and that our citizens will collectively benefit the most if we protect those resources and treasures and keep Williamson County the treasure that it is. I urge you to vote for Town and Country. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stuart Moore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My, my name is Stuart Moore. I reside at 7716 Kenny Fork Road in the Fernville Community. I, I'm not comfortable with a us versus them attitude. We're all in this together because this is a sustainability issue. And I'm asking you folks who have a legacy vote tonight to make, to look down the road 100 or 200 years, a quick illustration. In 1800, demographers believed that there were a billion people on this planet. 220 years later, there's 7,300 million. In 25 years, there'll be another 2 billion, and everybody wants to live like us. Potable water to drink, clean air to breathe and land that is rich in biology to grow good food. Annie's right. We need to look down the road and say, we've got to keep some of this land open so that we can feed ourselves. We cannot rely upon California, which produces 40% of our fruits, nuts and vegetables and is primarily a desert region, to feed us. This is a legacy issue for those who will follow us hundreds and hundreds of years down the road. And so I would say, let's do the right thing for humanity in a sustainable manner and vote Town and Country. The real enemy is not developers or people with large farms, it's fear, ignorance and greed. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Arnold.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Fred Arnold, 775 High Point Ridge Road in Franklin, Forest Home Farms area. I moved out of Nashville, Atlanta in 76, down to Brentwood, lived there about 20 something years, and I saw it ruined by development and just absolutely ruined. I live on the quiet side of Franklin, on the, just in the edge of the Harpeth River Valley. It's beautiful out there. And what I'm seeing today is what happened to, to Brentwood. Our daughter and son-in-law live down near Goose Creek Bypass, and we drive down there sometimes early and see that monstrous traffic jam on Columbia Pike coming from Spring Hill, which lasts hours, and then it goes the other direction. I see Highway 96 coming in from Dix, Dixman County, I call it. We can't sustain this. It, it's impossible, and we're losing our heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rob Pease.
Good evening. I'm Rob Pease. My address is 1508 Aberdeen Drive. I was one of two developers on the advisory committee. I had not intended to speak, but I wanted to make a position clear of the building and development industry. During the county commission on Monday, it was stated the building development community supported this plan. That is not correct. The Home Builders Association opposes the current plan, and they provided a reasons for the opposition in a letter to the county commission and planning commission earlier this month. As a committee- As a committee member, I supported the concept of lowering density in some areas and encouraging growth in other areas that had better infrastructure. But my endorsement of this concept was conditional on seeing the details of the plan. And I've now seen the details and the full draft that was issued in February, and I do not support it as currently drafted. I have previously expressed that any rezoning should not be a broad-brush approach, but rather a more fine-grained approach where infrastructure needs and the need to accommodate healthy growth and the need for diverse new housing is met. Changing the density to .2 units per acre for all of the RD1, RP1, and SIC zones is a fairly broad-brush approach. Yes, the plan does propose two new village areas, which is a good start, but these appear to be, appear to accommodate limited new growth since there is no proposed boundary. If the Village and Hamlet areas are intended to accommodate diverse and moderately priced housing and compensation for lowering density elsewhere, then the new villages of Arrington and Rutterville should be expanded beyond their current limited limitations or boundaries and defined as part of the 2040 Plan. I appreciate the thought and work that's gone into this document, and I support some of the changes, but I think there needs to be better, more adequately addressed to accommodate the healthy growth in certain areas of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila King?
Hello, I'm Shayla King. I live at 6330 Cox Road. I'll try not to cry this time. We're one of the faces of the people that's affected by this. I'm a farmer. I'm a rancher. We wanted to raise our children, and our entire retirement plan was based on a plan that we could do that and buy a piece of property after we basically kind of got run out of Brentwood because the family farm had been there for many years, but we couldn't get out of our driveway. We are now, our farm now has new neighbors, 77 lots, 99 lots, and a proposed, soon-to-be-proposed another probably 100 lots. So I understand all of those subdivisions being in your yard. Now, we have subdivisions around us. Okay? I believe that in the short term, our property value is going to be affected. Once inventory in the county is gone, and it's all built out in the urban growth boundary and all the current inventory is gone, then our property will come back up. I don't have that time. And this is what I'm going to ask, because we don't have much time. Would you consider, if you decide to do this plan, to sunset it? To put a limitation, a moratorium on development? And say, you know what? For this many years, we're going to adopt this plan, and we're going to slow things down, but we're going to give the people whose retirement, whose legacy to their children is based on selling their property in a time that they can do it. So I'm going to ask you to just consider sunsetting this plan if you decide to adopt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. John Shealy?
I'm John Shealy with the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee, and we're at 9007 Overlook Boulevard in Brentwood. The plan before you tonight seeks to balance the loss of home sites with two initiatives. One is to increase densities in the cities, and two, to designate some further hamlet and village areas. I agree with your consultant that having the cities increase their density is going to be a heavy lift. I also think that if you downzone these areas to five acres per unit, it's a much more difficult political thing to raise those densities, to get the densities you're going to need to have viable villages. Because they're talking about having retail in there, you'll need enough rooftops to support that retail. I'm recommending, and I know there's a timeline, but we're recommending that you at least start the process to see if you actually can offset the loss of these homes through the cities, because I don't know of any way that you can actually compel them to increase their densities. And also, to give your county commissioners, should they decide to downzone these properties, to give them parcels that they can, at that moment, upzone or raise density so they can facilitate these villages. Because politically, raising densities, as you know, is very, very difficult, but that's one of the things you're going to have to do with this plan to make the hamlets and the villages viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Tommy MacArthur?
My name is Tommy MacArthur. I live at 5119 Seward Road in Brentwood. I've been a native of Williamson County. I've been a real estate appraiser for 37 years, and I've been a real estate broker for that long. I have no doubt in my mind that downzoning proposed will negatively affect property values of those currently zoned RD1 and RP1. I ran a sales comparison of sales RD1. It was about 27 sales, averaged 107 acres, and the average price was $27,000 per acre. Ran the same analysis on RD5 sales. The average size was 81 acres, and the average price was $13,773. I'm not advocating that every property will be affected by 50% or more, but there's enough evidence in these sales to illustrate there will be a negative impact on property values. It's logical to assume to me, and you all on the planning commission, that if someone brings forth a plan that's asking for a higher density, they're seeking to enhance or increase the value of that property. To me, the same is true if you downzone a piece of property. You're going to have a negative effect on values. I also want to look at density. There's been a lot of talk about density. The average density approved through current, yes, sir. Current county regulations is .576 lots per acre. That works out to one lot to 1.74 acres. Also, based on the county building permits, there was 4,093 building permits over the last 13 years. The last two years, 2017, 2018, 339 and 392 new single-family building permits. I'm not sure how you come up with 80-something thousand houses in the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dori Bowles?
Hey, good evening. I'm Dori Bowles, the CEO of Harpeth Conservancy. I'm also a resident at 201 Deerfield Lane. And obviously, a lot of people put a lot of time in. There's a lot of people who care about the county, and I thought it would be helpful to pull some statistics out of a very important study that was done in 2018 for the greater 10-county region that really tried to emphasize and help do apples to apples with the economic values that various types of land provide. So that we're sort of not caught up in this dichotomy of either it's a large farm or it's high-density subdivisions. And I'm referring to the 2018 study called "The Economic Valley of Open Space in the Cumberland Region." That was done by the University of Tennessee, and it was funded by Cumberland Region Tomorrow. And when we say open space, it's a funny misnomer. It refers to working farms. It refers to parks. It refers to hillsides and floodplains, and all of these are protected or are different things. And the important thing is, we've lost 260,000, no, 320,000 acres since 2002 in this region where we're paving over our rural land. And the folks here who care so passionately about them need other options. They need an agricultural protection program. We all need to be working on that. That's one of the recommendations, along with the open space plan. And truly, one of the most important things is to set up an implementation strategy so there are other financial ways for people to get money and be paid in order to work farms and have open land. So just some quick stats to wrap up. $700 million in tourist output comes to Williamson County alone from this rural open land. That's 3,000 jobs. Over $367 million in annual revenue from agriculture and forestry from these property owners who manage and have agricultural land, and that's 2,800 jobs. We don't want to lose those. We also might want more diversity in the types of agriculture and land that's used to produce on our, I'm sorry, produce agricultural products.
Dori?
One last thing. $360 million of cost savings because of clean water, clean air, and drinking water, and air pollution removal. It's very important, our open lands, and this plan really helps make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Good evening. I'm Mary Brockman. I live at 1407 Old Hillsborough Road. I live on 112 acres in the bend of the Harpeth River with my family, and we've been there for 25 years. For 12 years, I was a county commissioner representing District 9. I'm currently serving on the advisory committee that has been working on this comp plan for the last year and a half. I also served back in 2007 on the steering committee for that comprehensive plan. We actually served for at least three years before the plan was adopted in 2007. So you see, I really have had my hat in this ring for 15 years, and that's why I'm here so passionate about asking this group to take the lead and approve this plan for this county. It really is the right vision that creates the right balance. And as, having been an elected official, I will tell you, Monday night, having 22 county commissioners endorse this plan is significant. It believes, they all believe, that this is the best direction for this county and its citizens. I really agree with someone who said, this really is an issue of livability and sustainability. Our quality of life is absolutely so important. So you take all the tangibles, all the compelling information in the plan that was analyzed is absolutely at ground zero, but it's also those intangibles that make us who we are. So I would say that about 2013, a group of 30 property owners actually came to the county and asked to be downzoned, to go from 1 to 1 to 1 to 5. Not a single property owner believed that it was going to devalue their land, and in fact, we felt otherwise. Please, follow the lead of this plan. Our children and grandchildren will thank us.
Thank you. Jay Rush? Russ, I guess?
My name is Jay Russ. I live at 1004 Orchard Hill Court in Arrington, Tennessee. I've been asked to read two statements. One, and the first one is from Charlie Fox that couldn't be here tonight. It says, "For several years, my sister and I have discussed the development potential of our farm that is continuous to the Kings Chapel project. We have discussed this with the developer of Kings Chapel and the developer of the Roberts property, as well as the civil engineers of both projects in order to design a way for our land to fit in with their projects. This is only the back part of our farm between both developers' projects, which allows us to connect together, and all of the traffic will come out on Highway 96. No traffic will come out on Osborne Road. Once we have figured out a way to make this happen, the engineers met with both developers, discussed with planning about a year ago. The planning staff informed us there was no mechanism to hook a private subdivision to public roads. We were also told at the time that there was a plan for the works to allow private subdivisions again. Because of this, we were told this discussion to wait until private subdivisions were approved again. We had the sketch plan done in the project, so we waited. The county did approve private subdivisions again, so that, when that happened, we started back on the project. We identified soil fields, DSIR, et cetera. I understand that the DDR is needed, and the CCN for the continuous property is in the works. When we learned in December that the new zoning could stop all the work that we have done, I would ask the planning commission and staff to give us the time needed in order to finish this process that has started by considering grandfathering this project in. John Powell, the owner of Superior Wastewater, also couldn't be here. He wanted the planning commission to know that the process had been started to amend the current SOP to allow for the small number of lots the Fox family are talking about. Also, that the CCN amendment process has begun. While this process is under the control of the state, and it could take, the last time we did this, it took over eight months. From a development standpoint, the first houses in a subdivision will not be completed until 2021. With the time effort and money spent on this, the time working with the planning staff before the new rezoning, we are asking that you would consider grandfathering the project to allow it to be completed.
Thank you, sir. John? What helped me with your last name, John?
Waits.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Waits. My address is 1949 Championship Boulevard in Franklin. I'm a residential developer by trade, and I have 200 acres under contract for the last two and a half years that have been in the county works, in the county process of the existing rule book, under existing rules, going through the process of getting the property rezoned and approved. And we've spent, again, we've been working on this for two and a half years. We went through the, getting the CCN. We worked through all the issues with the hydrologic and the open space and all the things and all the rules, and now the rule book is being changed with this new ordinance. So we're situated between a hamlet that's situated at Wilson Pike and Kings Chapel. So downzoning this property makes absolutely no sense in any fashion, and it's really...
Are you already in the pipeline? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm not in the pipeline. I'm in the pipeline, but I'm not in the pipeline. I can't get on the agenda because...
Mike, are you familiar with this?
I can't get on the agenda because I have to wait till a contract gets let from the state for 96 that comes five lanes all the way to our property. So I'm just stuck in a no-win zone. I've spent $185,000 getting, going through the process that the county has laid out there, and now I'm at the end, and now the rule book's going to be changed. Thank you.
Christian Curry?
Good evening. Christian Curry, 1045 Sneed Road West. My name is Christian Curry, and I live on 1045 Sneed Road on 282 acres, zoned one house per acre, 11 miles south of downtown Nashville. We've been there since 1977. My father, Bradley Curry, and I support Town and Country zoning. I've reached out to over 68 landowners that total 6,358 acres, primarily from the west part of the county, that support Town and Country zoning. Many of the property owners in the northwest area have current SIC one-unit, one-acre zoning. They all firmly believe that their property will continue to appreciate more because of Town and Country zoning. We are here on this historic night because our current zoning has resulted in $800 million in debt and rising for all Williamson County taxpayers. This is not a landowner issue anymore. This is a Williamson County taxpayer issue, and common sense must prevail. The county has been analyzing the current land use since 2017 traffic study report, and have put tremendous effort and had extensive public input in the land use plan. Do not be misled by misinformation, shortsightedness from three groups: Realtors, home builders, and out-of-state developers, trying to provide guidance. This plan provides planned growth, responsible use of citizens' taxes, and Town and Country living. There is a farm saying that resonates with this land grab. Pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dalton? Those two are leaving. He's coming, I hope. You know him?
Good afternoon. My name is John Dalton. My address is 1100 Sneed Road in Franklin. That is our family farm of 70 acres that has been in the family since 1950. I am very much in favor of the Town and Country plan, and I hope the commission will vote to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Peterman?
Good evening. Bob Peterman, we live at 720 Wild Timber Court, which is up behind Temple Hills area. Some of the topics I was going to mention have already been covered, so I'll cut this to three quick points. First, you may be aware that the Keep Williamson Livable Group posted a petition in support of Town and Country online in January, and I've really been amazed by the results. As of tonight, 1,593 of our fellow citizens... As of tonight, 1,593 of our fellow citizen taxpayers have signed the petition, and more than two-thirds of them took the time to add a personal comment. I know that we all care about property values, but it's not just the landowners who are opposing the plan that are at risk. High-density development in our rural neighborhoods has already significantly added to our taxes and eroded the property values of all of us nearby. Stevens Valley, just over the hill from our home, is probably the poster child for what ails us under the current land use plan and zoning structure. With the adoption of the proposed Town and Country Plan and consequent downzoning ordinance, you will finally have the latitude to approve developments that are in keeping with your best judgment and the interests of all those you serve. Please honor the wishes of the vast majority of your fellow citizens and protect our future by adopting a Town and Country Plan. Thank you very much. Here's the petition.
Thank you, sir. Roger Cully? Roger? Did you get tired and go home? Rebecca Pullen? I'm on a roll here. There she is. Come on, ma'am. Pull the mic down where it gets to you. Thank you.
Rebecca Pullen, 9635 Clovercroft Road. I didn't speak at the commission meeting, although I wanted to, but I knew I'd get emotional like Ms. King did. But my great-grandfather rode a horse from Flat Creek to Lookout Mountain to defend his property. I guess I can cry if I want to. At the commission meeting, I learned for the first time what discrimination really is, and I spent the entire night praying that my bitterness would be removed and that in the future I would show greater empathy for those who are enduring discrimination. President Calvin Coolidge said, "Ultimately, property rights and personal rights are the same thing. You have taken away my property rights or are planning to, and my personal rights." Researchers have found overwhelming evidence that restrictive zoning raises housing prices, and the stricter the zoning laws, the greater the disparity between income levels of the homeowners. Your plan states that you desire high-quality growth. This exclusionary zoning allows only more expensive, low-density housing and keeps out the smaller, less expensive homes. You should just cease talking about affordable housing for the teachers, the farmer, and the policeman, the office, and the health care workers. As the pictures in your plan brochure shows, you're only interested in the CEOs and the department heads. Farmers cannot even cut enough hay to sell to these five-acre gentleman farmers to pay their taxes. Concentrated growth in municipalities will not reduce the amount of money required for schools. I live within three miles of five elementary schools. They are located within the growth boundaries or the towns of Franklin, Brentwood, and Nolan'sville, so I'm not missing many of them.
Ma'am?
Okay, and the county's responsible for all these expenses, and the road congestion is caused by the people traveling from Rutherford and Davidson Counties to work in Cool Springs. They leave work at the end of the day, and they return to their communities at night where they spend their money, support their schools, their communities, and their churches. We lose all the way around. Thank you.
Monty McIntyre? Does that sound right?
I'll read you another if you want to read them.
Yeah, my name's Monty McIntyre. I'm at 3077 Old Hillsborough Road. I have a farm out in the Hillsborough community. I was born in the Grassland community. My family has a farm there now. I have a business in Thompson Station, which is agricultural-based. I've driven all over this county for the last 57 years. That's how old I am. I was born here, I played ball here. I know this county as well as anybody sitting here. I respect this group here very much. I have a lot of friends on this side. I respect this group very much. I got friends over here. But I got to tell you, it takes courage to stand here today. It's going to take courage for you to make a decision today that's going to affect my grandson. He's three, and my granddaughter, who's one. I'm going to be fine regardless. Regardless of what you guys decide tonight, I'm going to be fine. But I could tell you, they're not going to be fine. If you guys don't make a plan to protect this county, the county that I love and everybody in here loves, I know these people love it too, they've shared that with you. If you don't protect that, what we love, and stand up and show courage tonight, 20 years from now, very few of us are even going to be here. Very few of us are even going to be impacted by the decision you guys make tonight, but our offspring will. The people that come after us will. And I'll just say this one thing. I drive around this county all the time, and I ask people, people, new people that come here, that say, "Hey, what do you like about it?" They go, "Oh, I just love it there." I go, "What do you like?" I like the people. I like the history. I like the beauty. Well, you got a chance tonight to protect all three or not.
Randall Smith?
Randall Smith, 499 Jones Parkway. I only wish that I was raised a Martha Brockman or a Curry. And a lot of the folks I hear speaking up here are those that have owned a large tract of land, and their main interest is about protecting what's around them. They don't want to look at it. I'm thankful God that the pilgrims didn't have the same attitude and didn't want the rest of us to come. The way I see it, smart growth is the plan. People are coming whether we like them or not. They're coming, and this county is going to grow, and it's a beautiful place. But I only hope, just like these folks over here, that my daughter can afford to buy a piece of it. Because if you want a bunch of Hidden Rivers, if you haven't looked at what Hidden River is, it's a five-acre neighborhood with one house on it. I think the prices start at $2 million. And I don't know how many of you here can afford that, but I know I sure can't. Now, I'm labeled one of the black sheep because I am a home builder, but I don't need to build another home in this county. I really don't, and really don't know if I care to. But what is important is that we should make room for those that want to come behind us, and your plan works great if the municipalities that you guys, actually Mike and Greg, say has got to work with you, but right now, they're not working with you. They're all pushing it out, too. They don't want density. And there's nothing wrong with Stevens Valley. The lowest price of a home in there starts at $600,000. The traffic you're talking about is the people that come to serve you in your restaurants, clean your offices, but they can't live in the county. But it's real odd to me that we don't want to make room for those that come behind us. We get our little piece, and then we want to shut the door. That's what I see. It's not money, and we need to work together. There is a better plan, and the plan has a lot of holes in it. And Rob Pease did an excellent job, and by the way, he knows more about planning, and I'll say it, than anybody sitting up here. And I hope you'll listen to him. Thank you.
Betsy Hester?
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Betsy Hester, and I live at Valley Ridge Road in Franklin. I'm also a county commissioner. I would like to point out a couple of things that I don't believe have been mentioned. The Middle Tennessee State University study that says growth pays for itself is incomplete. It does not address the issue of building schools every year. It does not address the issue of highway maintenance and improvements. We have a lot of bridges in this county, and our bridges need regular maintenance. Want to have us continue on that. Our highway department does a great job, but they don't have enough money. Our transportation study says we need $223 million. Our school capital improvement for education costs for $500 million over the next five years. We're about $800 million in debt for our schools now. We do need to fund our jail improvements. We have another judge we have to find a courtroom for, and then our juvenile center needs to be improved. We will have growth. It's going to be very expensive, and as county commissioner, I have to look at tax dollars. I do not want to raise taxes so that we are taxing Tennessee. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Larry Adams?
I'll be quick. I'm Larry Adams, 8255 Dalewood Court, Brentwood, Tennessee. Not everyone wants to live in an urban growth area or similar area and can't afford, nor can any, not everyone afford five acres of Williamson County land. We need to be deliberate in what we're doing, and there are other options. We don't need this plan. I'm part of a family with deep roots. Five generations of our family have lived and worked here, and I have over 1,200 acres of land in this county, and some of which we purchased with the idea of being able to develop it. Now, it looks like the rug is about to be yanked out from underneath my feet, and it's going to hurt when I land. My dad and my uncles, they loved this county. They, I mean, they were born here. They liked their open land. River Park in Brentwood, they worked with the city and donated that land as part of a deal to the county, and that's probably one of the most used parks in the city, in the county, probably. I just, you know, I live backing up to it, and you can just see almost literally thousands of people every day walking up and down that park, and it's, it's not like we don't love the county. We do. We like our open land, but this plan as it is, it's just not right, and we need to defer it and let's do some more study. There are other options other than just throwing a blanket, you know, five-acre tract thing over the whole county. There's other ways to work it. Thank you.
My name's Keith Niedhart, 6246 Lad Road. My wife and I purchased the property in 2013. It's a 40-acre piece of property, and I've just recently become aware of this zoning change. I know there was a lot of effort put into trying to get this into the public. Just one quick point I want to make is, I've stood at this exact podium before the Board of Zoning Appeals for special use permits in the past. When we've had to do that, I have to mail letters and post signs to my direct neighbors. I was not afforded that same courtesy by the county. I didn't get on Facebook. I didn't read the newspaper, and that's, maybe that's my negligence, but when I have to come to talk to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I have to send a letter to my neighbor, and I was not afforded that same courtesy here. This zoning proposal is going to make or break my household's retirement plan. When we purchased in 2013, my wife and I started to move money from our retirement, put it into this piece of property with RD1 zoning as part of our plan. With this move, this is literally going to diminish our retirement plan, and at almost 50 years old, I'm going to have to start over. I fully respect everyone in the county who wants to maintain a 1 in 5 or greater density on their property, but the, for them to remove that right, or people within the voting body to remove that, my property rights, I do not feel is appropriate or, truthfully, I'm sorry, I'm lost for words, but we certainly put thousands of hours into our investment, and I certainly appreciate you guys considering either deferring this vote or voting against it to allow us to maintain our existing density. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Vaughn?
Jordan Vaughn. I live at 801 Caledonian Court. I'm a resident of Williamson County, but I'm also the president of the Williamson County Association of Realtors. And as I sit here tonight, I hate the fact that we've come to a us-versus-them situation. It's, I find it disrespectful and shameful that some in the town and countryside have resorted to slandering my association into the industry that I enjoy and I love, that I have been able to afford to purchase a home with. The reality is, is we completely agree with everything that's been said, and the fact that we are here, the number one attraction to this county is the quality of life. And we agree that we want to preserve the community character. We agree that there's a traffic and road improvement needs and overall fiscal impacts of that. And it's so easy for us to say that Town and Country is the choice that we want when we're only given two choices, Town and Country and Business as Usual. But this is where we hit our fork in the road with this plan, because we received the details of this plan 34 days ago on February 7th, and again, those got changed 13 days ago with an amendment. We believe that this isn't our only choice, that we have more choices. We believe other choices were suggested to you in 2007 to explore that haven't been done for the last 13 years, and there's other options and other details to this plan that we feel like are, have holes in it, and we feel like are inaccurate. This plan relies heavily on the municipality collaboration, which was mentioned. The mayor said he would give it his best effort, and we have a commissioner say, admit to us that because of state law, this was going to be very, very difficult, practically unachievable. Community character we believe in, we believe in the diversity of our citizens, the diversity of our housing, the diversity of our economic status for our citizens, and the diversity of the land use. But no housing for our teachers, our social, our school workers, our service workers, and our blue-collar workforce will take away from that community character and will continue to be an impact on the through traffic that we have, because those people can only afford to live outside of this county that they, that they work in. And we believe that you all are, with this plan, are throwing the overall fiscal impacts onto these landowners and the value that they bring to this county and the character they bring to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Adams?
Thank you so much. My name is Steve Adams, and I live on Green Hills Drive in Brentwood, Tennessee. I'm going to ask you guys, ladies and gentlemen, to defer this drastic action until we have further study, and I'm going to base it on common decency and fairness. Now, contrary to popular opinion, I have over 1,000 acres that is involved with this. I have not received one phone call, one email, one letter, or even one sign placed on our piece of property that tells us that we need to, we would be affected by this, and that's not right. Now, I am 71 years old, and I've lived in this county my whole life. And my brother spoke earlier about five generations. It's actually closer to eight generations that we've resided in this county, and I would let, like, for the next generation to live here also. this, that does not give them the right to trample over our property rights. Numbers don't matter. Our country was founded on not letting the majority have tyranny over the rest of us, and that's what's happening. And so, I want you to think, if enough people think something's good and you don't think it's so, that doesn't mean that your rights need to be taken away. So, they may come for you someday. So, that's all I have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absent. Deborah Bell, I think?
Yes.
Good evening. Deborah Bell.
Move over a little closer to the mic there, Ms. Bell. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Bell, 8220 Hawkins Road, College Grove. I'm a landowner in the triune area. I strongly support the Town and Country zoning. As a eastern county resident, I feel treated less favorable, quote from Franklin Roosevelt, less favorable due to the current zoning. Please, in this history of inequality, and endorse the Williamson 2040 Land Use Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Dan Bond?
I'm Dan Bond. I live at 1660 Lewisburg Pike. I've owned land in this county for well over 50 years and farmed all that time also. I'm definitely happy with all the zoning that's taking place in this county over the years. I couldn't be any more proud of it. I, having subdivisions in rural areas is absolutely wonderful, though, in my opinion, in the fact that if their quality, I think they blend in so well with the rural atmosphere. It provides services that we wouldn't have any other way as country people, better electric and water systems. We get, our roads get more attention. Hey, someday we may get a fire hall with personnel, I mean, instead of just having one. I mean, just so much more when you add more population, more people. I truly love just watching the kids out watching me, of course, from subdivision, watching me feed cattle and so on and so forth. I think it's, it's just absolutely wonderful, a wonderful way to blend the rural and the city together. The, we own land ourselves, several parcels, one parcel I'm especially fond of, it's been zoned in one acre tracts for well over 40 years. It's family land, the people around us, none of us really planned to sell any of it, but the fact that they value it and take it away from us, I just don't think it's right. I think y'all need to slow down just a little and take a look at some other options. There're bound to be some that don't hurt the landowners so valued, so desperately, so much, and allow us all to work together to have this county as, as prideful as it possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lori Layman?
Hi. I'm Lori Layman. My address is 9170 Sidney Lane, Brentwood. I'm here to speak on behalf of DeLacy Belafont. She's sick, so she has asked me to read her statement as she's written it. The Town and Country people see the issue as taking sides. I do not. I plan to keep approximately 75 to 100 acres of my property to still enjoy as a barrier and to leave my child and grandchildren, if so be it. But 250-plus acres is too much for me to look after as a single woman, so I am frowned upon by friends who support the Town and Country appeal because I want to sell. It is your right to put your farm in land grants, hold on to it, or do whatever you want. It is your land, but when you tell me how I should use, sell, or what to do with my own property, shame on you. As a farmer from a family of farmers, it is our 401K, our savings, our retirement, and we all have that. That is all that we have from our parents and grandparents that have left for us to inherit. If you think the five acre plan won't affect you, you are wrong, or maybe you are right, it won't affect you, but your children. I can guarantee at some point, if you aren't in a land trust, one of your generations will have to sell, maybe for the money, maybe for health reasons, or maybe because they want a new life in another place, but either way, it is their choice. The Chamber of Commerce advertises for the appeal of living here. My friends are making this country where only the rich can live here. Now, to live in this outskirts of town, you want to pass a rule that there has to be five acres to build. Not only can middle class not afford to live here, and I'll finish up, please consider two to three acres and not the five acre plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Nutell, Nutelli, I guess?
Thank you, Chairman Lyke, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and, and thank you for giving the time that you do to try and make the county a better place to live. Appreciate that. My name's Michael Nutelli. I live at 4403 RNO Road in Franklin. I've been here about seven years. I was invited to be a member of the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee since our family is a developer of master plan communities. We've probably built about 100 or so in the last 35 years from the smallest 50 lots. We have one that's about 4,000 lots, and I, I mention that because we take what we do very seriously, because we understand the impact we make on communities, and what we build is gonna be there for a long, long time. And whether you consider it ego or not, you know, we're proud of what we do because we think we make a positive contribution, and the communities that we, that we build in seem to think the same. In, within Williamson County, I've developed the Falls Grove Community and the Clovercroft Preserve. I want to thank the county for tackling this difficult topic and appreciate Mike Madison's effort to try and organize the resources and engage the public to that end. As an aside, I commend Mike Madison and Floyd for the stewardship of their departments. They're tremendous assets to the community. I appreciate that. I stated early on in the process of the, of the committee that despite being part of the development community, I support the concept of preserving open space in rural areas as part of a balanced approach to managing growth, and I put a lot of emphasis on the phrase "balanced approach." At the meeting this past Monday, Commissioner Lawrence had stated that I was fully in support of the plan, and I, I wanted to just expand on that to say that I am fully, as I said, I'm fully in support of preserving, you know, rural areas with the goal of having a balanced approach to managing growth.
Michael?
Many of the details, the implementation have not been finalized, and that leaves some uncertainty, and I've conveyed those, those same concerns to, to the committee in terms of socioeconomic impact and the mix of families going forward and the impact on housing prices going forward and so forth. So, with that, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is our last speaker. We will conclude the public hearing at this time. We will go to discussion with the planning commission. Any questions or comments, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone? Lot of information tonight. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir. I feel like this, this plan we've been presented is, is really incomplete. I know the first, on the growth management framework, the first thing is to immediately, upon adoption of this plan, is to reduce the rural zoning densities. And then, the next thing is, is to pursue creation. Pursue means something we're gonna do later on. We, it's, you know, if we adopt this plan, then we're gonna leave out the blanks. Fill in the blanks later is the way I kinda perceive it. And we'll convene and have a regional symposium, and that's to kinda figure this thing out later on, implement a phased growth strategy, which means we'll fill those blanks in later on, and create guidelines. Well, the guidelines already, should already be in this plan if it's a true plan. So, to me, we're maybe not even looking at the total economic impact of the landowners and the workers, the realtors and the businesses that's gonna be affected by just shutting the door upon immediate adoption of this plan. And, and we can't, we can't just approve this plan, in my opinion, and leave, leave the blanks to be filled in later. With that, I move that we do not adopt this plan and, or at, at this time.
Beth?
There was a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Well, there's not a second right now, so I'm...
Oh, okay.
There's a second?
I'll second that. Oh, sorry. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Beth?
Yeah, I guess I'll speak now. I mean, can I speak on, on the comprehensive plan? We have a motion on the floor?
On the motion on the floor.
Okay. I guess I would only say that my experience has been that since the beginning of the conversation, public input, staff has done some revisions on the plan based on input in terms of not having a minimum one acre lot on the conservation subdivisions and so forth. I guess I'd like to hear from staff, this being a comprehensive plan document, that if we can get into more specifics on the zoning and refinements that some have suggested during the zoning portion of this process, I guess I would direct that towards Mike.
So, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking about the next steps in terms of the, the zoning and what that's gonna look like?
But the refinements or discussions with landowners and everything else.
Right, okay. So, as, as was mentioned earlier this evening, you know, adoption of this plan doesn't do anything to change the zoning. There's a, there would need to be a separate process that would take place that would involve public meetings, that would involve public hearings, and as we were to receive public comment, as we always do, we'll, we'll document and record that comment and evaluate it, and then eventually provide a, a map to, to present to you all and ultimately the, the county commission.
So, in terms of, it was mentioned that there's some diverse housing opportunities in the area plans, and I was part of the triune, listening to that whole community make those decisions for themselves and provide a lot of flexibility in those areas. So, if Rutterville or Arrington, those special area plans were looked at, what we do, if we do today, say we pass it or we don't pass, say if we do pass it, they would still be able to develop those area plans, right, with some changes in density that wouldn't be 1 to 5, or would they be, that would go under zoning, that wouldn't go under the plan, because you've said they're gonna have some special area plans in those areas. That's what I want to make clear.
Right. So, so we have conducted four special area plans already for Grassland Leapers 4, College Grove, and Triune, and, and those were very well received by those particular communities. And then, following adoption, we, we worked to create a tailored, you know, customized set of zoning standards to help implement the, the recommendations of the plan, and in all of those cases, you know, development at higher densities than 1 to 5 had, have been in place. In fact, in Triune, the recommendation went to, up to two units per acre for a good portion of, of Triune. With the special area plans that would take place for Rutterville and, and Arrington, that, that same process would take place, and so it would be anticipated that the boundaries of those areas would, would be expanded to accommodate additional development consistent with the vision that, that comes out of those community forums.
Okay. And is it correct that we are not changing the zoning in the urban growth boundary area in the unincorporated area? That's retained at 1 to 1?
That is correct.
Okay. I think I got it. Thanks.
Keith? I'm sorry. Keith, I'm looking around. You have the floor.
I think everybody said what we need to say. I'll, I'll pass my time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Robin?
So, we're talking about deferment?
That's the motion on the floor.
I thought you said defer. You wanted to defer it.
I thought he said defer.
I thought he said defer.
What'd you say, Mr. Sanders?
I said defer this motion, a motion to defer this passing of this plan at this time until some of these...
That's what I thought you said.
Questions or answers?
Defer. There's a motion to defer. Robin?
Okay. That's what I thought. So, some of what Beth was saying is some questions I had also, and I think Mike answered it, that this is not changing of zoning today or tonight, our vote. It's more of accepting or adopting that we need some change in the county, basically, and this kinda gets it going. I think they, they had a deferment on the, on the floor at the county commission meeting, and they basically were stating the same thing. This is just to get it started to, correct me if I'm wrong, just to get the work started. How, now, now how do we wanna rezone things, et cetera? So, it's not really we're rezoning and changing everything tonight, is that?
That, that is correct. And I'll point out, some, some folks had mentioned notice, there were some comments related to notice, and so, when that time comes, every single property owner that would be affected would receive a, a, a notice in the mail, not only notifying them of the public hearing, but also of the public meetings that we will hold regarding this. So, so you're right, the, the adoption of the plan is simply adopting the policies contained in the plan, and the, the zoning would be a separate matter, as would the other implementation steps, you know, those additional rural protections, those, those efforts to work with the municipalities on the urban growth boundaries, which are already underway. There was a joint meeting with the county commission and the Franklin Board of Mayor and Alderman where this very issue was discussed. It was received very well by the city of Franklin. One of the Spring Hill, the, one of the administrators at Spring Hill was, was present at that and indicated that they want to participate in that step as well. So, in response to Commissioner Sanders' point, yes, so the, the, the plan actually makes some very specific recommendations about how to, how to deal with that issue and what types of things to pursue, and Mayor Anderson has already taken some steps to, to lay the groundwork to accomplish that.
So, I guess I don't really see the need to defer and have more discussion here, because there's been a lot of work gone into this, so I think, I just don't see the need to defer for a month, and we're still, we're still here, so I think we should continue on.
Well, anyone else? Don?
I believe my question has been answered.
To Mr. Sanders' point...
And so when that time comes, every single property owner that would be affected would receive a, a, a notice in the mail, not only notifying them of the public hearing, but also of the public meetings that we will hold regarding this. So, so you're right, the, the adoption of the plan is simply adopting the policies contained in the plan, and the, the zoning would be a separate matter, as would the other implementation steps. You know, those additional rural protections, those, those efforts to work with the municipalities on the urban growth boundaries, which are already underway. There was a joint meeting with the County Commission and the Franklin Board of Mayor and Alderman where this very issue was discussed. It was received very well by the city of Franklin. One of the Spring Hill, the, one of the administrators at Spring Hill was, was present at that and indicated that they want to participate in that step as well. So in response to Commissioner Sanders' point, yes. So the, the, the plan actually makes some very specific recommendations about how to, how to deal with that issue and what types of things to pursue. And Mayor Anderson has already taken some steps to, to lay the groundwork to accomplish that.
So I guess I don't really see the need to defer and have more discussion here because there's been a lot of work gone into this. So I think, I just don't see the need to defer for a month, and we're still, we're still here, so I think we should continue on.
Well, anyone else? Don?
I believe my question has been answered.
To Mr. Sanders' point, a plan is a vision. It is not regulations. So if you're looking for regulations inside that plan, you're not going to find them. Because they're not, they're not ever in a plan. It's a vision. That's...
But if we adopt this, if we adopt this plan tonight, the wheels are in motion to accomplish what is, is been presented.
You could do that without the plan. Sammy? Sammy's next. Beth, hang on a second. Sammy?
So, Mike, can you go into a little more detail? What is, we're, we're going to have public meetings, we're going to talk about, not we, the county and others, and, and everybody's going to be involved in talking about the zone change. And, and we're adopting a, a plan or deferring a plan tonight? Or totally killing a plan tonight? If we choose to move forward with this, and, you know, I'll, I'll bring up Rob P.'s letter that he sent to all of us that we all probably read or should have read. And he brought up some good points around State Route 96, and, and as that's five-laned and, you know, out through there, out to Triune, and there's areas that will be in the, in the five acre zoning, one to five zoning. Is, is there opportunities for a corridor or where it makes sense to, to have denser, more denser areas? And, and what are the next steps? How is the, how is the zoning decided upon? How has it changed? Because a, a broad brush is a hard thing to fully understand in, in this whole overall plan. And I'd just like to know, we, we've talked about engaging the public and, and engaging the property owners. How will they be engaged? And what will the steps be? Who votes on that? Is that a County Commission? Is that a Planning Commission? And I'll stop giving you thanks to answer.
Okay. Well, let me start by saying that, that it's not completely a broad brush the way it's currently proposed. You know, the, the villages have a lot of opportunities, the, the urban growth boundaries, of course, but also the new villages, the boundaries of which have not been decided. But we anticipate those being areas to accommodate additional growth. Now, having said that, in the next steps, we'll hold public meetings. As I said, every single property owner that might be affected would be notified directly of the public meetings as well as any public, as well as the public hearings that would come after. And, and yes, that's the time where, you know, the, the, the vision that is always painted with somewhat of a broad brush would then come into focus, you know, as we obtain input from the community and as we continue to analyze, we would, you know, respond to those and, and look to see whether there are additional opportunities along that corridor or, or in other places to, to adhere to the, to the plan policies and goals, but make sure that we have a zoning map that ultimately gets presented to the Planning Commission and County Commission that reflects some detailed analysis and study of, of what that might look like in a very detailed way. Does that help?
Is there, is there opportunity for, what level of development that's not on a corridor? What level of a property owner, what level of input do they have to choose more prescriptive what their zoning is? Or is that, are they given the opportunity to have the input? Or...
Of course, every, every citizen and certainly every property owner would have an opportunity to provide input and, and, and to express their either satisfaction with the, the plan the way it might affect them, or, or request that it be different. And, and we would, as we always do, look very carefully at every comment that we receive and, and, and go through those in a very methodical and detailed fashion.
Beth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I just wanted to, as a County Commissioner, just maybe fill in a little bit of information that the whole Planning Commission not, may not be aware of. The numbers in your information that really talk about potential infrastructure and cost to the county are not sustainable. I don't know how many of you, if I asked you right now what our annual budget is, would know that number. I sat on the Budget Committee last year, and it's 626 million. We actually are looking here, necessary roadway improvements would be in excess of 110 million. We have a budget of like 13 million for the Highway Department. So I would be, if I were a home builder, or if I were a realtor, I'd be saying, well, why don't you increase taxes so with this new growth, we can provide better services? Well, the county, as you know, has instituted a sales tax referendum for schools in that past. We have now maxed out our sales tax. The county has increased property taxes, a small point last year. We've done that. We instituted a road impact fee. It's been sued by the Home Builders Association, many who are here. And we have about 17 million that we can't utilize from that fund. We won the first, Kristy, correct me, we won the first round. It's been appealed. We're going back. So it's, it's interesting that I am a property rights person, and if I felt the one to five meant that people could not sell their land and develop into a conservation subdivision, I could not vote for this. But that's not what it says. And the very landowners that have come to me over the years to say, Beth, we want more buffering from subdivisions. We want more open, you know, we want more protection for our way of life. This hits it in the middle. You can still develop your property, but it brings the density to in line with what is 65 to 70% of our county is one to five. So back when I was a Noinsville resident, I heard about this, and I went in February, the 2007 Land Use Plan, and we were having the same discussion in 2007. The difference is, we see the results of not doing that, the people then not doing this. So personally, I would really ask that we would consider passing this tonight, understanding I would like to have more conversations with individual property owners. Are they within potential UGB expansions? Do they have something in process? Are we allowing them to complete their process? I want to be fair-minded while I also want us to do our job, which is plan for the future and the infrastructure this county requires of us. And by doing nothing, or just, you know, passing the ball might feel good tonight, but you're creating more challenges ahead. And what I would say as an elected person, I can bring a resolution or something to the County Commission to alter the comp plan or to do something in the future if, as we fine tune this. But if we don't get this ball rolling, I'm really afraid that history will judge us. So just in that, in that sense, I do ask that you all consider not deferring tonight, just from that perspective. And I think that's what we struggled with as a County Commission, and that's how we came to be at 22 to one. Because we have to write the checks and make the numbers work, and, you know, it's not just somebody else's problem. Lastly, I would like to say, I don't recall anybody saying that the Home Builders Association was in support of this project, of this plan. I don't think that anybody said the home, the whole association was. I, I didn't hear that. But obviously, by the letter and the responses from staff, we know that's not the case. Their, all I, statement that I made was that we had looked at one to three or one to 10, just some discussion on a conference call, and there was talk about the first public review at one to five. And someone said, well, what about one to three? And people said, well, we haven't vetted that. It's at one to five. And someone said, well, what about if we do a one to three, do a one to 10? And you don't know whose voice is what in a conference call, but someone said, no, let's stick with the one to five. And that's how that started with public meetings on the one to five. So anyway, if there's been any misunderstanding, I hope that's corrected. I've said that, and if anybody has questions about what happened at County Commission, I'm happy to answer that.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to make comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I'd like to mention in response to a couple of the comments that were made during the public hearing about folks who were in the process of developing their property or who, who, who had, you know, were, were at a certain point but not yet able to submit. The zoning aspect of this is going to take a period of time. Obviously, we're going to have public meetings, and there's requirements in terms of public notice for public hearings that would need to take place. So that's a period of time that would need to take place. The other thing is that, and I mentioned this at the County Commission meeting on Monday, that it's unlikely, in my opinion, that the County Commission would want to approve zoning changes and have them become effective immediately. I, I think that there is a, a very high likelihood, in fact, almost a certainty, that there would be some sort of an effective date established for those changes, you know, further down the future, whether that's 90 days or maybe January 1 as a, as a timeframe. And so that would be designed specifically so that people who have already begun the process have sufficient time, as they should, to complete their, their development proposal. And the policy of the county is that if a complete application for a development is submitted before the zoning might change, then that application can and should be continued through the review and approval process based on the existing zoning. Last thing I'll mention is that there is language in the plan that, that, that talks about the plan as being a, a living document that should be reviewed on a periodic basis. In fact, Mayor Anderson asked that language to be put in there specifically. I think that was maybe one of your, your questions or one of your points. Comprehensive plans ought to always be reviewed on a, on a fairly regular basis to make sure that they are doing what they were intended, and to make sure that, that they're, that they continue to be aligned with the vision of the community. So that is something that would also be done.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Robin?
So I was on, I've been on the traffic study a couple of years ago. So I know what the traffic's like in here. I live on Arno Road, close to Page, across from Page High School, so I definitely know what that traffic's like. And during our traffic study, the people coming into our county on the four major roads, which is Arno Road, Sneed Road, Clovercroft Road, and...
Linwood.
Thank you, Linwood. It, it's not coming into our county to work for us. It's about 50 to 60% through, through traffic. I could sit at my driveway and count all the cars that come through to go through it. That's what our traffic study came up with. Also, I was on the, I've been on the advisory board for the land use plan that, for the last year and a half. It's a very diverse, a very diverse advisory board. I'm a realtor in the county. I've been, lived here almost 20 years. I've been a realtor over 17 years. I have a son who is a teacher, because I know there's been lots of emails about teachers. My son's a teacher. He's a first-year teacher. He's 20, almost 25 years old. He cannot afford to live in the unincorporated county, in its current state, in its current zoning. He cannot afford that. I sell a lot of real estate in the county, and my son cannot afford that because there's no affordable housing for him. He can go to Spring Hill, to the city of Spring Hill, and afford a house. He could go out to Fairview and afford a house, but not in the unincorporate, unincorporated areas. I know this for a fact because I'm a realtor. So I just don't, you know, I, I don't know the need for a deferral. And I agree with what Mike says. I mean, it's, the rezoning, it's going to take, it's a process. This is just the beginning to say, hey, let's stop the growth. On another note, I've heard a lot of Atlanta comments and Cobb County comments over the years. I'm from Atlanta, and I would never want to see this county become like Atlanta. My husband grew up in Cobb County, and it's just a whole sheet of concrete for the most part. I, I grew up in Cherokee County, which is just north, kind of northwest of Cobb County. And it's once again, a, almost a sheet of concrete. I would hate to see the county that I love, have come to love over almost 20 years, come to something like that. I mean, our county is the seventh wealthiest county in, in the United States, and it's going to be hard for anyone to afford anything. And I know a lot of developers, I know a lot of builders, I know a lot of realtors, and I know a lot of them in, in the room here. And there's not one subdivision that I'm, I'm aware of in the unincorporated area that today, under the current zoning, is going, that my son can afford. And the lot of, you know, that's just how it is. That's the profession he chose, and I commend him for choosing that, and, but he can't unless he goes into a municipality, which we've been taught, excuse me, which we've been talking about, for him to be able to afford a home. So, you know, and I've, I've talked to developers, you know, when they're buying land, the numbers have to work. The land has to be affordable to them in order to build the houses, in order to sell the houses. If they, if they pay a higher price for land, then, you know, it just kind of goes back on to the consumer, and you pay, you know, more for a home. So, you know, I just do not want to see our county become Atlanta. I grew up, again, it's prob, where I lived, it was from Atlanta, it'd be like from Nashville to Franklin where I grew up. And I would just hate to see our county to become that. And so, and I was on the call that Beth was talking about earlier, and I concur with that. We talked about a lot of different things, and we felt like five acres was a good medium, and then, and then worked, worked around that, as Mike was saying, when we come, when it comes to rezoning. And we, we had many conference calls, we had public meetings, lots of talk. This wasn't just like haphazardly come into. And our committee was so diverse and came from so many walks of life and people all over the county. I own land. I have 12 and a half acres, not quite 15, but 12 and a half. And a lot of people on this, on this committee have, live in land. So, you know, I feel like I have a lot, a lot that you all are talking about. So that's my stance. I don't, I, I don't feel like we should defer it. I think we should pass it, and let's work to get our county to continue to keep it beautiful, continue to keep the rural character of it, and see how we can accommodate both sides and have a balance.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Don?
I, I just wanted to clear something up. We talked about the corridor on Highway 96 coming out of Triune. Are we talking about a five-laning Highway 96? Is that what was...
So we're not talking about that so much as the...
No, but is that what was just, what we were just talking about, mentioned with?
Yeah, I think that there's been a comment about that corridor specifically and the fact that TDOT is going to be widening that to be a, a five-lane cross-section.
Well, my, my thoughts on that is, I've been on the committee quite a while, and they've talked about that for years, about that ever being done. If that was ever done, I'm sure that, that we would redirect our developing process through that because of that. But I don't know if any of us in this room will ever see it built. We'll hear it talked about, but I don't think we'll ever see it built. So what we're doing right now is, is a plan, a conservation plan for what we have in place right now.
And I would...
The road system we have, that we have to work with right now.
I would also say that, that the widening of 96 that is proposed in the future, I think there's a segment that will be done sooner than the, the rest of it, is based on an existing need, you know, that, that's already there. And then we have to think about that, that development in that area will have to get to that corridor somehow on county roads that are not built to handle that kind of traffic.
Right. Thank you.
Sammy?
You know, I, I wanted to follow up and just say, you know, I was part of the committee and that, that put this advisory committee that helped put this together and been part of a lot of discussions over the time. You know, at the, at the end of the day, this is, what I've heard tonight from Mike is important on the next steps. I believe that something has to change tonight. Something has to change in the future. Our continued growth, like Robin has said, if we continue to spatter our growth around the county, we're setting ourselves up for trouble. And, and the purpose, I believe, of this plan is to start that conversation with these urban growth boundaries and other things to get that focus on the development to occur in those urban growth boundaries. That is smart growth. When you grow close to your communities and, and you, where you can have fire, you can have water, you can have sewer, you can have police, you can have short bus routes, you can have short drives to drop your kids off at soccer practice and pick them back up, that's smart growth, where we can grow and densify that area. Now, I don't think, what I'm hearing out of Mike and others, is that we're taking a broad brush and just saying the rest of the county's one to five. We've got a lot of hamlets that are not defined. And we've, we've got other areas that over time will evolve into other types of communities. And we've got other areas that over time will evolve into other types of communities potentially, as roads are widened by the state of Tennessee or whoever. I believe, I firmly believe that now we've got to make this to start that conversation with all the surrounding communities. Because if we don't, and we do nothing, the developers will continue to, and I'm not saying anything bad, they're going to continue to go where it's easier to develop out in the county. And they're going to continue to go with alternative sewers that over time may be perfect and never have an issue with. But I know when we work to have smarter growth in town, we will have a better community, a more sustainable community. And if you weren't here Monday night, I would encourage you to go listen. A lot of the county commissioners talk about exactly what Beth just talked about. And some of them are here tonight, and they had very good points, and I listened to every word of it the whole time. So I've spent a lot of time involved in this plan. And if I believe this is a broad brush that was just going to mess everybody in the county over, I don't think I could vote for it. I don't believe that's where we are. This is the start of a process. And I think that's where we are. I think, I'll leave it at that. I think this is where we need to be, and let's proceed on.
Anyone else? Mr. Sanders?
I'd just like to clarify for my deferment. Of course, I appreciate the county commission and everybody in this county, the problems we have with the traffic and the schools, nobody will deny that. And I was just, made that motion to kind of slow this train down, get some of these answers answered before we pass this plan. When you talk about working with the other municipalities, they have a mind of their own, and you need to reach out and get some answers from them before you come with a plan, in my opinion. So you have some answers to present to the board. And that was the reason for my deferral of the...
Anyone else?
No.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
No, you're lit up now. Go.
Okay, so, you know, I'm new to this board. It's my second meeting. But I'm not new to this issue. I mean, I've been around here for a long time. I've been in business around here for a long time. To limit a group of people from their legacy, their pension, if you will, their 401, that, I have an issue with that, okay? Because they don't have anything else, right? And getting the municipalities to cooperate just seems like a bit of a momentous task. I mean, I just don't, I don't know how that's going to work. And maybe that's not nevete or whatever, but just to try to ask them, and I asked Mike this question the other day, I was like, okay, so why have people jumped over the urban growth boundary to go out and develop into the county? Does anybody have an answer for that?
It has to do with sewer, where the sewer is, the wastewater, you know. Anyway, Mike, why don't you answer it? I had a comment after that.
Well, the way I answered it to Commissioner McCord when he asked the question was that, you know, there are a variety of factors involved, but the main two that we see are a lot of available land in the rural areas and favorable zoning for development. I think Commissioner McCoy hit the nail on the hand, you know, sometimes it's path of least resistance.
The other part of this is trying to get these folks that are stuck, you know, they're in the process, or maybe they haven't been able to get in the process because of lack of acceptance of application and that type thing. I think we've got to take a real good look at those folks and find out exactly and identify that, and then make some considerations for those. And I can't probably sit here and let us go, well, that's okay, you know, these zoning things take a little while to get in place and that type thing. Well, that's all well and good. Development takes a long time to get in place, too. So I think we need to be considerate of those folks also. Thank you.
Chairman, I was on the committee in 2007, and it was brought up at that time about even having up to 15 acres, but they wanted to bring it. And at that time, what was said, it wasn't politically feasible to do that. Let's ride out what we have now and see how it works. Well, we've rode it out. It doesn't work.
Amen.
It's caused more problems for us. We've got to bite the bullet, and we've got to do something. And this is a good starting point, because you can't keep going the way we're going right now. It's a proven fact now, it does not work.
Ma'am, do you want to make another comment?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know how many of you were at this on January 29, 2020. There was a growth policy discussion in Franklin with the city of Franklin, Williamson County. This is an example of already the county interfacing with municipalities. And I know there's, personally, I know there's people in the room here that have properties that would potentially be in an expanded UGB and probably not be upset about this because, you know, when you care about your county, you care about roads, you care about schools, I know all of you care about it. You know, you can't care about one thing. We've got to care about everybody. We've got to care about everything. And so, you know, I'm just very encouraged. We have a county mayor that builds really good relationships. I can say that. I'm a former mayor of Nolansville, and I was involved as a citizen with growth, you know, in Nolansville, we had density bonuses in our zoning ordinance that nobody understood but a few developers. So all these neighborhoods came up with density bonuses, and we were like, whoa, I thought we were 1.8-point units per acre. Well, once we educated the citizens and we had surveys and we just had a good process, everyone said, no, we don't want to grow at that rate. So at that time, they removed the density bonuses, and it's at 1.8 units per acre in the SR. I never thought I'd be sitting in this seat. It's very funny to me, okay? But I've been through this. And what would have happened to Nolansville if they didn't remove the density bonuses? You can't drive through the traffic at 5 o'clock. So when you make these decisions, you're not prohibiting growth. You're looking at the numbers and the land uses, trying to make it happen in the right places. And with that, I want to partner with landowners to come up in the next phase with things that are fair. But things that also, you know, I can't look at somebody's saying, well, I want to make more money on my land, and I've got figures here from Mike that say that's not necessarily true, you're going to lose money, but I don't know. It's what numbers you look at. But then you're telling everybody else that they have to pay the price for that growth. You're saying what I want and what's good for my family is more important than the rest of the people, the taxpayers, that are going to have to pick up the tab. We're at the place, we cannot, we cannot do it anymore. And, you know, if we could, if there was magic money, but like I've said, we have gone through these different sources of revenue. And the one thing I will close, I read the Williamson County Realtors Report, and I thought this was interesting, one of the most factual things I read in it, which said... I've got the wrong one, just a second. There's so much stuff. Well, in a nutshell, I've got the quote. I don't want to be misquoted. But it was saying that when we're attracting new residents, we're not just attracting the same type of residents. When we attract new residents from different areas, they may come from higher property rates and higher tax places, and they think, oh, I've hit it, I've hit heaven in Tennessee, no state income tax. But their expectations can be so much higher for services. They come with different expectations. And that is kind of, was a very wise piece, I thought, in the report by the Realtors that, you know, we're seeing that in the county, too. And we welcome and we are warm for every new resident. I moved here from Arizona. I was in the park service. My dad took us to Yellowstone National Park to Arizona, and I found my love in Tennessee. But what I'm just saying is that, you know, this comes down to what is good for the entire county, what is sustainable environmentally, fiscally, you know, that's why I believe in this plan as the first step. But I have heard every single comment, and I will work with anybody who's here, especially when I'm not a planning commissioner anymore and I'm a county commissioner for a final vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I guess what Don and Sammy said, we've got to start somewhere. You know, we did this last plan in '07. At that point in time, they talked about 1 to 5, and that was voted against because it's like that's just, that's a little irrational at this time. So that wasn't included in the '07 plan. I'm not proposing 1 to 5 across the county. I think what Mike has said, we're going to review, we're going to discuss. This is not wrapped up in a bow and all done and, you know, going to put in place tomorrow. So I'm going to echo, we need to start somewhere. And I vote again, I'm not going to, you know, vote for a deferral. We do have a personal responsibility to our landowners, but to our taxpayers, you know, so that's a balance we have to strike. You know, conservative is, yeah, you know, being a conservative is, I want to do what I want to do with my land, but it's also, you know, lower taxes. And so we've got to strike that balance somewhere. And I'm a conservative. I want to strike that balance somewhere. My husband's family, as many of you on this, you know, panel or this commission, goes back four generations, they could have shut the door a long time ago. You know, if you really think about it, that this commission has worked on trying to make it work for everybody. You know, we've got the best schools, you know, I think this commission has tried every way in the world to make it work. I don't think that stops today. You know, I think the plan is continuous. So there's one thing to consider, too, and Robin just said it, that, you know, with her son being a teacher, my son, you know, does heating and, you know, cooling, they can afford to live here. But from what Robin said, that they can afford to live like in a UGB, we don't know that if we start building more in the urban growth boundaries, that our kids aren't going to be able to stay here, if it's not on the family farm. You know, they may still be able to live within the city limits, and it's going to become more affordable. I don't think we know until we start somewhere.
Amen. Anyone else? Don?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, as I had mentioned, been on the other one, and we said the last time it wouldn't work, excuse me, let's try again. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this to go ahead and get something going that's good for the county.
I've got to, Don, I've got to clear this motion first.
Okay.
Can you recall for the questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a point of information, the motion was worded, the motion that's on the floor and seconded, was worded to not adopt the plan at this time. That's the motion that's pending. It was not deferred to a certain time. So just to be clear, when you take a vote, that is the motion that is on the floor.
Thank you. I'm glad you clarified that.
Has everybody finished? I'll make a very brief comment. Lots of technical information, good exchange, good information, and I've learned a lot. And I've served on this thing a long time, sat in this chair for a long time. I will never make a more important vote than tonight, not in my past and not in my future. Thank you. We have the motion and a second. Prepare to vote? No.
What is the motion? Made is to not adopt the plan at this time. The motion is to not adopt the plan at this time. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the motion to not adopt the plan at this time.
No. Are we ready to vote? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion fails. No. Thank you. I'll get it right in a minute. Don? You want to make your motion now?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that in order to start the process, the proper process going, that we accept staff's recommendation and adopt this plan.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
That's not on the, we didn't, we didn't, we're going to have to vote.
You're right. We don't have that on the machine on the second vote. Well, boys, vote. Prepared? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Two noes. Motion carries. I've got to stand up a minute, folks. I'm locking up. If you want to leave, you're welcome to. You can stay with us, but we'll take a few breaks, take a few minutes break, okay? Beating Cup order, please.
John, I'm going to get out of here.
I appreciate that.
Out of respect for all of you.
I'm going to give this job up. It's getting frustrating, folks. Gen item 19, concept plan, good grief. Concept plan review for Harpless-Hala subdivision containing 33 lots on 70.82 acres located off Arnold Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
The applicant is proposing a 33-lot traditional subdivision on a portion of the property's owned hamlet. Lots range in size from 20,000 square feet to approximately 36,000 square feet. Wastewater we handled via the stag sleep treatment system for which a revised site plan was approved at the January 2020 meeting. The applicant has requested action on this item be deferred until the April 2020 meeting in order to allow additional time to address staff's comments. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? What is going on? Good grief. Record it? Motion carries. Thank you. Continuing under preliminary plats, gen item 20, preliminary plat review for McDaniel Estates Phase 3 containing 42 lots on 16.46 acres located off McDaniel Road in the 11th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this development was approved at the February 2017 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the third phase of the development, which consists of 42 lots and approximately three acres of open space. During the concept plan stage, a requirement that all sufficient rights of way or easements needed to complete the required off-site road improvements as specified in the traffic impact analysis review letter from the county's traffic consultant had been obtained prior to the submittal, excuse me, of the preliminary plat containing the 87th lot was imposed upon the applicant. As this preliminary plat contains the 87th lot, the applicant has demonstrated that all rights of way or easements needed for said off-site roadway improvements, which include intersection improvements at Arnold Road and McDaniel and Meeks Road, have been acquired. The engineer for the Williamson County Highway Department has confirmed the rights of way or easements necessary are in place. Additionally, the Highway Commission has approved the design plans for these improvements. The preliminary plat is consistent in layout with that depicted on the approved concept plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, which shall be addressed in conjunction with final plat consideration. One, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Two, prior to submittal of the final plat containing the 87th lot, all off-site road improvements as specified in the traffic impact analysis review letter from the county's traffic consultant must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. traffic consultant must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Three, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage erosion control. Four, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Milcrofton Utility District. Five, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Six, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Seven, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Eight, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And nine, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Questions of staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Gen item 21, preliminary plat review for Troubadour Golf and Field Club, Phase 2, containing 39 lots on 28.54 acres located off of Clubview Drive in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
A revised concept plan for this development was approved by this body at the January 2020 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for Phase 2 of the development, which includes 39 lots and approximately 1.7 acres of open space. The layout depicted on the preliminary plat is consistent with that depicted on the, the approved concept plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, which must be addressed in conjunction with final plat submittal. One, prior to final plat submittal, off-site roadway improvements required in association with individual sections of the development as stipulated in the traffic study review findings provided by the county's traffic engineering consultant, including left, including turn lane improvements at side entrances, must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Two, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage erosion control. Three, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Milcrofton Utility District. Four, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. Five, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of appropriate performance bonds for landscaping. Six, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And seven, provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Questions, staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. That was 20? Final plats. Liberty I-840, lots 1 and 2, large lot easement subdivision on 12.99 acres located off of Liberty Road in the 1st Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 13 acres in size and is located off Liberty Road, approximately 1/4 mile south of Fairview Boulevard. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create the second and third lots of an existing 50-foot ingress egress utilities easement. At this time, the applicant is requesting deferral to the April 2020 meeting to allow more time to demonstrate county regulations have been met. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion to defer. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Gen item 23, final plat review for Arrington Ridge subdivision, Section 1, containing 33 lots on 93.12 acres located off Cox Road in the 5th Voting District.
A revised preliminary plat for this section of the development was approved at the February 2020 meeting. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval for the first section of the development, which contains 33 lots, approximately 51 acres of open space, and the wastewater treatment and disposal system. The plat remains consistent with, in layout with that depicted on the revised preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with the following conditions. One, prior to final plat submittal, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed wastewater treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following: a letter from TDEC indicating that said treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning; as-built drawings showing the location of all treatment system components; and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said treatment system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications; a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted said system and is currently operating same; the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $120,000 for said treatment and disposal system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant; and the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $50,600 for landscaping improvements. Number two, the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Three, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control in the amount of $766,000. Four, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Milcrofton Utility District in the amount of $192,000. Five, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system in the amount of $144,000. Six, establishment of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of $82,500. Seven, execution of a performance, uh, performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Eight, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And nine, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, staff? Motion made and seconded. Any continuing discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Gen item 24 was withdrawn, and 25 and 26 were on consent. We are finished. I want to say one thing before you go. Y'all did a hell of a job with your comments tonight. They were damn good, and I appreciate them. Especially Ms. Lothers over there. You bet.
I just want to say that I think, you know, Mike and staff, and everyone who participated in the advisory board, from my counterpart Realtor, the, a couple of people from the development world, the county commissioners, Commissioner Lawrence, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Lothers over there, and Sammy, and myself, and Mike, and John, I just appreciate it so much. I think you all did a great job, irregardless, you know, where, where it was leading or whatever. And I think it's a great plan, and I'm excited to see what's going to happen in the future. I think, I think it will be a great balance for all, but I just want to say thank you all so much. And for Greg Dale. And, and anyways, I just think it was great, and I appreciate everything you guys have done. And I think you'll see a, I think we all will see a great outcome in the end, and it'll be a good balance for everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else? We adjourn.
Do you want to, Dawn, do you want to clarify that? Okay, this is a clarification before we adjourn, just, okay, great.